All right. Okay, you'll get your panel, please sit down. It's time to start the meeting.
Good. Don't check that. Zoom in.
Okay, I'd like to call the Dover Select Board Meeting to order on Tuesday, January sixteenth at six thirty P M. First item, public comments.
Snowing.
Official thank you to the road crew. All right, hearing none. New business.
One.
I said it's snowing.
And I said, thank you for our road crew. No, no others, hearing no others. There we go. New business. We have the stormwater master planning for Dover with Margot. And how do you say your last name, Margot?
It's Gia.
Margot Gia for the Wind and Regional Commission. Welcome, Margot.
Thank you, and hi, everyone, and happy snowy evening. Wish I could have been there in person, but it would have been a little climbing up is. Or maybe it's coming down from Dover that I would have worried about a little bit more. But I'm glad I can join you via Zoom. So I just want to talk a little bit of, just to kind of give you a quick overview of what I'm going to just talk about is, I want to just talk about what is stormwater? And what is a stormwater master plan? And then how a stormwater master plan might work for Dover? If you all decide one way or the other to go with it. And I kind of want to just start from the beginning, since we have so many probably different people here tonight. So stormwater, if you look at just the definition, it's just surface water in abnormal amounts, and it usually comes from rain or melting snow. We don't really think of stormwater in the forest because, you know, most of the water that falls when it falls in the forest is absorbed into the ground and completes a hydrologic cycle by going, you know, just sort of being able to be absorbed. But the more compacted the soils are, and the more impervious a surface, so meaning that things cannot soak into the ground, we, that's when we start to run into stormwater issues. So, you know, a lot of people think, oh, you know, we have to be a really urbanized community in order to have stormwater issues, but it really does affect all of our rural communities as well as our urbanized communities, because anytime we're changing the landscape, creating, you know, roof surfaces or parking lots, any impervious surfaces, paved roads, we're creating and changing the hydrologic cycle. So we're creating water dynamics that weren't there before. And we've all seen this right in the last few years with all the new storms that have been bigger storms that have been coming and hitting the region and showing us some of these issues. So, you know, some of the, we're all aware of the issues caused by stormwater. There's erosion that happens along stream banks or creating gullies coming off of parking lots. You can have pollution, chemical pollution that's on the road surfaces going into our waterways. You can have flooding where there might not have been flooding before, because water can't get into the ground, and so it settles and creates flooding, and it also can create, you know, damage to the infrastructure. So some of the best ways to deal with stormwater runoff is to deal with it before it becomes a problem instead of after the fact is with most of our issues that we're looking at when we're talking about heavy rain. So the more that we can mitigate ahead of time, the better off we're in the long run with having to deal with damages. So, one second, please. Sorry, I'm just getting over a cold. So much of the built infrastructure in our state was actually predated some of the stormwater regulations that are now in place. And we have stormwater regulations that will be coming in the probably about ten years from now, that's going to start regulating stormwater in places that we haven't seen it before. So basically, any any place that's now three acres of impervious surface or more, come ten years from now, is going to start being regulated where it's not right now. They've already implemented this on the Champlain side of the state, and so we're trying to encourage towns on our side of the state that don't have these regulations in place yet to think about, oh, let's start thinking about what we can do now when we're not regulated and maybe can find funding for it. So that kind of gets us to stormwater master planning and what it is. So the main purpose of stormwater master planning is to kind of protect our streams and the health of our streams, lakes, the aquatic life, and provide opportunities for the human uses of water by mitigating sort of the effects of urban or even rural development. So for urbanized areas, rural road networks, stormwater mastering, master plans are kind of the first step in looking at where stormwater is a problem, and how can it be captured and mitigated so that we're keeping it more on site instead of letting it go where it never was intended to go. So the state of Vermont has been doing stormwater master plans for communities. Excuse me. For quite some time now. And our side of the state has not received quite as many, although we do have several communities now that are in the process. A lot of our bigger bigger areas like Bellows Falls, the Rockingham area, what, why, Wilmington, Londonderry, and that Brattleboro are now in process. So we're starting on this side of the state to really encourage communities to think about this. So that's why I'm here. Because you do have an opportunity in front of you to consider. So the stormwater master planning overview is that they kind of look at and they define, okay, where's our water quality issues? And where do we have quantities of water that are causing issues? They collect, the contractor collects data from existing you know, plans or, you know, like your hazard mitigation plan. They talk to all the residents. They're really trying to collect all kinds of data to try to figure out what's, what's going on in town. And then they create a prior prioritized list of potential projects that would look at how do we start mitigating for and improving our stormwater situations. And they give you a list of projects and sort of a I idea of like what's high priority, what's lower priority. And I should say that none of these lists that they create are mandated. They're just suggestions. They also take like the top three, about the top three projects, and they come up with thirty percent designs. So the contractor is really looking to help the town, you know, create this list of projects that's, you know, all over town that will help current or future stormwater issues. So it's both for development that's already occurred, but also potential future development. They create lists for both of those, and they also come up with thirty percent designs for some of the top most prioritized projects that the town is really considering. These are our top priorities. So the state of Vermont right now, they've been funding stormwater master plans in a variety of different ways. But in the last several couple of years, what they've been doing and is that the state of Vermont, the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation is hosting, they're, they're sort of putting out an R F P for a contractor. And they're hiring, so the state is hiring one contractor to then work with several communities to create master plans in each of those communities. So that's how some of the other communities in our region have, they've been in prior rounds, and so they're working with different contractors to get their master plans done. And Dover right now, if you all decided like, hey, you know, this sounds like a good idea, you would be put on a waiting list for a stormwater master plan. So currently that list is has sort of enough plant, enough communities on it that you might not get into this current R F P that's going out. However, you know, one of those communities might drop out for various reasons that happens. And so you could get kicked up into this round that's happening, but if you don't get into this round, you're on the waitlist into getting into the next round. So that getting on the waitlist is a good thing because you're just, you know, you're in the queue then. So the plans are fully funded by Vermont D E C. So they pay the contractor, they are the project manager. And they hire the contractors. So the contractor, there's no monetary outlay from a community. The, the thing that a community does have to commit to is working with the contractor. So there's some time commitment. And what I've found with the communities that are currently undergoing, it's not a huge time commitment. Usually they're the kickoff public meeting, so well, actually two kickoffs, one with sort of the key sort of town personnel to learn about the process. But then there's a public meeting where people can say, hey, you know, there's a real issue on this road. It's always washing out or you know, this brook is always getting a lot of trash in it from whatever developments. So there's a chance for public input. So usually town members, road crew members are a part of that. And then at some point, the contractor will need to come to the town and do like a walkthrough of various areas around town. So having somebody show them around and talk about different sites is another sort of time commitment. But again, that usually only happens about once, maybe twice throughout the whole process. So other than that, that's really where the time commitment and any expenditure is really of time from the town. Otherwise, everything else is covered through the state. And the process usually takes like a couple of years. So even if you were in this current round that comes out in twenty twenty four, you might not have a plan till twenty twenty six. So it takes time. But the benefit of these plans is that you walk away with sort of an idea of a prioritized list of projects that could really help improve water flow situations throughout the community. And not only could the community, like you're, you know, the town say, hey, we want to tackle this project, but other water quality partners, sometimes the Conservation District comes in or the Connecticut River Conservancy, even Tribe Unlimited has sometimes gotten involved, W R C sometimes can get involved and help in work with the town to manage a project and find funding for it. Businesses can sometimes say, hey, you know, I want to move this project along, and they can work with one of those partners to help find funding. And the really great thing, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, is right now we're not under any mandates on our side of the state to deal with properties that are three acres or more of impervious surface. So it's like part, big parking lots and sometimes schools lots because of roofs and the parking lots and things like that. Shopping centers tend to sometimes fall into that. We're not under mandates yet, but we will be. And right now, there's funding available for not only doing stormwater master plans, but also there's water quality funding just in general right now out there through the state. And we don't know ten years from now, when the mandates start happening, what the funding situation will look like. So that's one of the reasons to consider maybe doing something like this now and starting to think about what projects will come out of this. We might be able to take advantage of some of the funding in our area. So one of the things about Dover is that you are very closely associated with Mount Snow. And, you know, that's an integral part of your community. And as a town, you can still get on the queue and you can still do a stormwater master plan without Mount Snow. But it might be nice if they were invited to participate in the stormwater master planning, because then you would have a true look at the whole community. But is it, you know, they're, they're in a unique situation though, because they are, you know, they're under their own stormwater regulations. And so there's things that they have to do and mandated, and they want, might not want to participate because they have enough on their plate that they know that they have to do. But as I said, they don't have to be a part of it in order to have it really be a benefit to the rest of Dover. Because there's a lot of areas within Dover that, you know, there's been changes to the landscape and a lot of impervious surface put in that could really benefit from just having a look like where is these things is an issue. So I just, I threw a lot out to you, and you know, you might have some questions. You don't have to decide tonight what you all want to do. But as I said, you know, you, you might want to, in the next while, make a decision if you want to get on the waitlist or not. Just because communities are starting to say, hey, this is an opportunity, I'm going to take it. And we don't know when. So anyway, I'll open it up to questions. I'm sure there might be some out there.
Thanks. Thank you for the overview, Margot. Tabby.
So, hi, Margot. I'm Tabby. We've spoken before. I'm also floodplain administrator, and I'm curious to know how some of the stormwater planning, stormwater plans, et cetera, will integrate with the almost ready for prime time new FEMA flood maps? And how those interact, or if they do?
Yeah. You know, I'm sure that the contractors are very aware and staying on top of the process, their FEMA is going through with their flood maps. And they take those kinds of things into account when they're collecting all the data for a community. But the FEMA flood maps and stormwater aren't necessarily always linked. A lot of water comes down off of hillsides, off of developments. They go down streets, and eventually they end up in the river, but they might not just be from riverside or in the floodplain properties. I know my family has a home in a ski community, not in this county, where my in-laws live, and they are up on the mountain. They're far away from where it flooded this summer, but they were heavily impacted on the mountain from the development above them. And as the waters came down off of this new streets and paved streets up in that development, their property was highly impacted. And they're up on the mountain. So, you know, stormwater master planning is not just looking at floodplains, and they're looking at sort of the built and potentially built, you know, developments all around a community and saying, you know, this is maybe causing some problems in this stream. I'll use that their property for an example. The stream, you know, erosion out of that stream was probably twenty feet, you know, from carved that far into it, and the whole thing was filled with plastic from, you know, not intentional, but just out of things that came off of decks and everything from up above. So that's an area where they're looking at, for example, trying to maybe see if a project could be done to help restore that stream so that it doesn't, and keep the stormwater in some retention ponds or something up on the other property, so it's not constantly coming down the hill. And so they're looking at potential funding for that. So I don't know if that fully answers Tabby your question, but hopefully it does.
A bit.
Any other questions, Margot? Sarah, so you were saying that we could get on the waitlist and other towns might drop off? So does that mean if we're on the waitlist, we're not committed a hundred percent? We're just putting our toe in the water, as it were? And would have the option of withdrawing if we got further down the road and realized that this was not where we wanted to head right now?
Yeah, you could, you know, and it might, you, you know, as I said, if other towns dropped out and you ended up in this current round, you would have to make a decision sooner than later because they need to know. But, you know, if you're not till next year or something, but you're on the waitlist and you change your mind in the, you know, in between, that's certainly a possibility of dropping out.
Other questions?
Scott. Do you anticipate the funding to be available next year as well?
That is the, certainly the hope. They have been funding these for the last three years. Well, this is the third round, and we haven't seen the drop in the funding yet, and it's not anticipated that it's going to drop out. But I will never say never, because you never know when a funding is available or not. But they are certainly, the state is committed to trying to help communities understand, and, you know, what happens when a project, when these stormwater master plans come out? They come out with a potential list of projects. Again, they're not mandated, they're not, they're just suggestions of projects that would help improve stormwater issues in your community. But what it also does is it puts you higher on a list for funding potential. So if you did decide, or you know, business was working with a partner, a water quality partner, and they wanted to go for funding for a certain, you know, project that was on this business's property, for example, that would be a higher considered project for funding because it was identified in a stormwater master plan. If it was not in a stormwater master plan, it would be a lower funding priority, because they want to, what the state is wanting to do is find these priority projects so that they're knowing that they're putting their money into projects that are been identified as being both cost effective and highly effective. And that's what the prioritized list does.
Brian.
I've got a thousand questions. I don't have enough time for you to answer this evening. So I have two questions. So you're, you're asking us as a town to first go into a stormwater plan for the whole town that right now we could possibly get some funding? Could get, we can't, we don't be able to get on a waitlist, correct? Right now, there's not a a spot for us, right? Is that correct?
That is correct, so.
But that, that's perfect. So my next big question is, obviously, a lot of our projects within our town are on what's called Act Two Fifty permits, and they have stormwaters that are attached to it. So you're telling me that within ten years or the state has mandated more, or you're going to be going to businesses and townhouse associations and going, you need to update your stormwater, and it's going to be mandated to businesses and people that have this three acre that is already preexisting? Is what you're saying is going to occur? Okay.
And it's not we, and I should say it's not.
No, I'm not saying you. You're just giving us the information.
But it is, the state will be mandating this. It's probably, again, not coming to our region for another ten years or so, but it has already launched in the Lake Champlain watershed.
But where there's.
Men for Mega Watershed. It has already been implemented.
Okay. So yeah, that, I understand that because there's more of an issue of the water going into Lake Champlain than we probably have right now. Okay.
You know, what's interesting is, you know, we don't hear about it as much, but all the waters that go into the Connecticut River, we are also under what they call a T M D L, which is a total daily maximum load for nitrogen going into the Connecticut River. Most of our communities in Wyndham County head to the Connecticut River, and it's causing problems, you know, all the way down to Long Island Sound. So we are impacting our waters as much as Lake Champlain. It's just, they don't have our reduction numbers yet for nitrogen. It's different in the Lake Champlain. They've been looking at phosphorus, so they started there, and they're eventually getting to us. But that's why we're delayed, which is to our benefit.
So when you say delayed, is it already in legislation that we're going to be coming under mandated, or is it something that you are, I didn't get a chance to read up on all of it?
Yeah, there's a lot there.
It's right, but this, it's not something, it is something that is in the legislation. They just haven't gotten to us yet, like mandating it more or less is what you're saying?
Yeah.
So I, I would say as a town, just listening to her today, it goes, it, it's better for us to be prepared ahead of time and find out what the situation, so we can allow businesses and property owners to know that this is going to come down the pike, so it's not a big, like, hey, this is what we need to do in seven or eight years. They can start knowing that they could, they may have to budget for this. I just don't understand how the town's going to go to someone, oh, you've had this property, and you need to put in a half a million dollars of stormwater? And where's that money going to come from? I guess I'm just a little confused on it. Maybe you can help me on that end of it.
I wish I could be more help, but you know, I think what we're seeing right now in where they've where they've put it in the place already is that they are, they are, they have funding right now, the state does, to assist these properties in meeting the three acre rule. But again, the question that we always are asking on the Connecticut Riverside is, well, what happens? Will that funding be there for us too? And nobody has a good answer for that, unfortunately. That's why we're just saying, hey, let's, let's start looking at things now when the funding is here, because we can, if we can start fixing some things now, we'll be in better shape when it becomes mandatory.
I mean, I, I have no problem making a motion that we should at least get on the waiting list. We don't need to have another meeting on this. I get the understanding of what you're saying to us. So I'll make a motion that we at least get on the waiting list, and then we can discuss it more if you guys have more questions. And once a second if they can.
Second, second, price is right.
Brian.
I really, like, ask for Mount Snow, like, you know, we have this little dam removal, and he said the dam removal is the water quality and stormwater, but we're aware that's going to go ten years down the road, like, this is a piece, that property is a piece of this. But it's not the whole piece of what we have to do for the ski resort. But it, it is a large piece of it. And I just wanted to make that statement to more, that it's, it's in the project.
So I guess, as, sorry if you pass Brian a question.
You may ask, Brian.
So is it something that if we're on the waiting list and they would like to have Mount Snow be involved in the the funding of areas that need to be, would Mount Snow want to be involved on the finding outside of where there's going to be needs in the future or expectations from the state? Or not, something for you?
Yeah, I guess like for like for us as a ski resort, like we're aware of like ten years down the road, like where we have to get to, and it's like, it's a tall ask. And it's like, it's, it's not deep, and like, we would like to be, if there's funding available, yeah, we'd like to use it. And I'm not sure if it's just for towns.
That was my next question.
Yeah, we're a, you know, we're a business, we're a private.
This is the whole town wide. I mean, us as a, I mean, I don't.
So, Margot, on the potential of a percentage of funding for some of these projects beyond the plan, is it for private or only municipal?
It has gone to both.
Okay, okay.
You know, as I said, there often water quality partners will jump in and work with a business or a municipality on a project, so they're the ones going out and finding the funding. And then are act as project managers so that it's not as heavy a lift on a community, like a business or a municipality. But again, that's separate in a way from the stormwater master.
We're just trying to get the whole picture, so that we understand, if we sign on for this, we get this plan, and then we have prioritization, and we could get some funding for some of the, the worst project, the biggest needs in town. So the best project, the biggest needs. So, okay, so we have, any other con conversation?
I have a thousand questions more, but I don't have time.
Well, you can, if you have further questions, I can connect you with, uh, the person at the state. Who can answer probably more technical questions.
They probably don't, they probably don't wanna talk to me.
Questions of Margot?
Can I say how?
Yes.
What is the process of getting on the waiting list?
Yes, okay.
You just let me know and I will let the, my contacts at the state know and they will get you on the list.
Okay, well, so we have a motion in a second. Is there anything else? All in favor? We wanna get on the waiting list.
Okay, and I, so who would be the best person to just, uh, use as the primary contact? For the state?
Either Tabby or, um, Jeanette.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you all for letting me talk about this and, um.
No, not me.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Thanks, Margot.
Have a great rest of your meeting and great evening.
Thank you.
This sounds like you just passionate about.
I know a little bit from, you know, with Con- condo associations, it's a, it's a big. You have to be certified as well, so.
Thank you for being here, Brian. All right, we're moving on to the certificate of highway mileage. Um, no changes, I assume?
No change until the last minute now.
So we do this every single year, the whole board can sign this. So does somebody wanna make a motion that we have so many class? One, which we don't, class two and three roads. It's, it's, it's a random twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and I make a motion that we sign the certificate of highway mileage. Um, specifying that we have zero class one roads. Uh, ten thousand three hundred eighty miles of class two roads, forty-eight point eight five miles of class three roads. And five thousand five hundred forty-seven miles of state highway.
Second.
And do I have to say class four?
It's just as it, they.
As, as specified in the document, yeah.
Uh, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor? So we'll all sign this. Scott, do you wanna come in at some point and sign this? Or no? Okay.
Sure, I mean, I, if you need me, if you don't need me to.
We have four, but if you might like your name on it.
For posterity.
Yes. All right, now we're gonna move on to unfitness, business, which is the budget. We're gonna, uh, the operational budget of two million nine hundred sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars. And thirty-seven se- thirty-seven cents. Plus warned articles, it includes the warrant articles of three hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. Uh, so that. This, it gets a little confusing because we back the warrant articles out. So it looks like, right now, our budget looks like we're saving one, one percent. That is not the case. Uh, if you back, put the warrant articles in, we are up, um, what?
Didn't we do it the same way last year?
Yeah, I'm just saying, right now, our budget, if somebody just looked at this budget, they would say, oh, it's down one percent, cause that's what it says. But, but it's not. And.
Why isn't it just based off of the same thing we did last year, so that we know what the increase is? I understand.
Because we, the voters voted all the warrant articles, some of them may not pass, some may change. Who knows? And we don't know. So I did an overall analysis, which included. All the capital funding and the, um, and the warrant articles. And if we vote everything in the affirmative at town meeting. And have the budget stand as is, we will be over for the first time six million dollars. It'll be six million thirty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-three cents, which is up four point three five percent.
From last year?
Yes.
After we.
No, this, that doesn't include, this doesn't include the capital funding.
Ah.
Which are warrant articles. They're separate. So I added those in. So that if a town meeting, everybody votes for everything that's in this budget, plus the warrant articles, as they said, that's where that, where that would be.
Number six, say that number again, thank you.
I would love to, but Mark is not here and I'd love to know those other three numbers were last year to see if our operational budget. How much that is up, not the whole thing off the top.
Okay, so.
But I don't need to know that.
Okay, well, I wrote all this out, so.
How much is our operational budget up?
Uh, our operational budget was, um. Up from the year before or from?
From last year's.
From last year's, okay. So. I added the capital in.
Well, if you want, I can put in the warrant articles, but without the warrant articles, it's only down nine percent from last year.
Um, and the warrant articles are. Because we're not funding a few agencies that don't service anymore, and we're also, we're increasing our capital. Building fund by forty, but decreasing capital paving by fifty thousand, um, it's kind of, they're kind of quite equal. All the warrant articles. Most are flat, the library's up a little.
That's why I'm trying to figure out how much the operational and highway is up, but that's what I'm gonna, I'll ask Mark, I'll figure it out, I reckon that's enough. Doesn't really matter, I just wanted it to be on record how much the increases supporters can go going forward. Overall, six point three areas, you know, that those are the big ones that, you know, how much went up, that's all, or didn't go up.
So I just did, I guess, the analysis of the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Um, questions? All right, so we should vote on these, cause we do it separately on, on a warning, if you have a name? The operational and the highway.
So I make a motion that we, uh, approve. Are we approving the budget or we're approving the warning?
We're approving, we're putting our stamp on this budget, so we're approving it.
So make a motion that we approve the budget, uh, an operational budget of. Two million nine hundred sixteen thousand five hundred fifty dollars thirty-seven cents, which com- is comprised of. Two million five hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred forty-four dollars thirty-seven cents for the operations. Plus three hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred fourteen for the warrant articles. Uh, highway budget of one million eight hundred two thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars forty-seven cents. For a total of four million seven hundred nineteen thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars eighty-three cents. Plus capital funding.
Mm-hmm.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? We also have the town meeting warning. Did everybody have a cha- chance to look at it? So, do you have one that we can sign if we approve it? All right. Does anybody have any questions about any warrant articles? Pretty much everything is as is, um.
Also hopefully discussed in budget.
Right.
Now, people can still put in articles up in fully eighteen, correct?
Petitions.
Petition for articles.
For articles, no, they're, they're to, yes, I'm sorry, petitions for articles till January eighteen.
Right.
Which is this Friday.
So, for some reason, someone came in, we have to re-vote on this? I don't know, cause that article just automatically goes in, right?
No, you would have to approve.
The approved article, yeah.
We would approve that article separately, you know, we wouldn't have to redo the whole, cause we, we were.
Well, we would have had it if we just chose it.
Which is, that's gonna be the ball, ball and carry in here.
So, I make a motion that we approve and sign the twenty twenty-four town meeting warning.
Sorry.
You good, Scott?
Yes.
All in favor? And yeah, you probably wanna come in and sign this as well, Scott, correct?
It looks prettier in the book.
Uh, okay, now we're gonna move to the assessor. The taxman maintenance proposal for the town of Dover, Linda.
Hi.
Sorry, we're still signing.
That's okay.
All right. What happened, everybody, did you get the road one back? And here's this one. Okay, so I, I had that in, yes, okay. So Linda, can you just give us a brief update? This is, um, an annual contract, I believe.
That's the annual, I, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe that is the. That's the maintenance contract.
Yes.
Um, it is. Has increased, which, like everything, um. But that basically covers any maintenance if, if we wanna add a layer. Of, of anything, hydrants, um. There's many ways to utilize this map. That would fall under that, is it twenty-two, I can't read, twenty, twenty-two hundred dollars. So it's just the straightforward, uh, maintenance contract.
Plus twenty dollars for any building added or changed.
Um, that would be if they did, uh, sketches, I believe. And since we've been a part of CAI, they have not had to do anything like that. Because I upload my sketches from our camera program to the map. That's how you get all the photos and sketches of any buildings.
And you know how much it was last year, Linda?
Oh, gosh. Was it eighteen, Jeanette?
Eighteen fifty. Did you add an increase in your budget that we just approved?
I. Not sure. Good question. Actually, that does not go under my budget, I don't believe. Doesn't. That's, that's a townwide. Shouldn't be in just the assessor budget, cause that's a townwide.
Okay. But obviously, this is going up over here, so we should pay attention to this for next year.
Right.
All right. Any other questions of Linda or us or anything on this? Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, sign the contract renewal for the CIA tax map maintenance, uh, at a rate of twenty-two hundred dollars. So I can just have to say plus twenty-three.
Uh, well, yeah, plus a twenty dollar fee for any, any drawings. It's affected April one, twenty twenty-four through March thirty-five, thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I believe that fee, that fee used to be fifteen dollars, so that went up five, but we've never had to use it.
Anything else? All in favor?
I. We can also, yes, too.
Where you guys go? All right, I see Eric is joining us now. Good evening, and we have Tim here as well.
Thanks for having me. Jeanette, can you mind making me the co-host and I'll just share my screen?
So Tim's gonna present the Bytown signage program update.
Yeah, so we in Bytown have been working on a plan, um, for just having some signage guidelines. So that. It's in the first slide, but I'll just skip ahead anyway. Basically, you know, the idea being that there's some standards. For any new signage that's created in the town, um, you know, right now, and you'll show you in a minute, you know, there are some. Inconsistencies, you know, with the signage that we have, and so this would just put some place and forward something that. As new signs are created, there's some just basic guidelines that whoever's creating them can. Um, you know, can use regardless of personal tastes or anything like that. And that would just kinda take some of the guesswork out of what font is used, what, what color is used, simple things like that. Those just help create us, um, you know, more cohesive brand for the town of Dover. You know, as we try to become more and more of a tourist destination. So, just wanna start by saying, you know, that there are inconsistencies in the current signs. And, and that's not to say that there's anything wrong with them. It's not to say that somebody did a bad job with one sign versus another. They're just not consistent, so just don't wanna offend anyone. I'm guilty of visiting well with the pole banners. And you know, we heard loud and clear that, you know, the, uh, the font used, you know, for Dover wasn't that well received. So again, having a plan like this would take something like that out of the equation and have something already predefined. To be able to fall back on.
So, just to, just to clarify, we are talking about signs created by and for the town, not individual businesses.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah, there could be a town of Dover. Municipality signage plan, um, you know.
Signage or advertising with our name on it.
Correct, yeah, yes, exactly. So, you know, just to go over what we have currently, some of those, you know, inconsistencies are, and I have some examples in a second. But different fonts, so you know, maybe the same family of fonts, but slightly different, or used bold versus regular. Or it might be totally different in some cases, um, same thing with colors, you know, some of the signs have. A similar green, but a little different, you know, whereas some of them are just blue. So, you know, again, just different inconsistencies with the signage that's already existing. Some have drop shadows or curved text versus, you know, again, being consistent with one another. All the signs themselves have different shapes, and you know, some say town of Dover versus others that say just Dover. Or Dover, Vermont, you know, with the newer signs that use like the new logo. So those are the things that we're just trying to create some guidelines to have going forward. So that some of these inconsistencies start going away. So, here's the examples, yeah, Joe.
Great.
What you got?
Yeah, I love that example. So. Yeah, I like the way you bring in your presentation, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm doing one. You bring in that we're gonna be a tourist town.
Yeah.
When you go to a tourist town, you somewhat have consistency of signage with your largest tourist. Attraction. Okay, at least what I see.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering if we're partnering with our largest attraction in town to kinda have a more consistent signage with what they're doing. So it does look like more of a tourist town, or is that something?
I think.
I, I mean, I don't know if we discussed it, I wanna break it up, I'm just.
No, absolutely, I think it's something that we, sir, let me get through this part, don't let me forget about that, cause I think it's an important aspect. But this just kinda puts it into perspective, or, or, you know. You see the individual signs driving down the road, but it's hard to sometimes think about all of them as like, you know, a full Dover, so. And there are other examples as well, um, but these were some of the ones that just really kinda stood out. And I know, you know, some of these are coming up, you know, I think, uh, economic development, I think, put in their budget for doing something new out front of this building. You know, we had the fire station have talked about a new sign, you know, that one's looking pretty raggedy.
Look the worst.
Definitely, um, you know, and then like. You know, and then like Forest Hills, you know, a new project that'll need signage, so it'd be great to have kind of a plan before that starts getting getting made. So, again, just wanna bring some of this together and have a plan to go forward with some of these new signs as they get replaced or created from scratch. So, you know, we wanted to keep it simple, you know, we don't wanna be overbearing and, you know, try to say that you need to do A through Z here for signage. You know, we wanna be able to leave some flexibility in some of the signs, if that's, you know, what, what you guys agree with. So we just kept our proposal simple with basically two elements. One being starting with font, so there'd be two fonts that are used. The main one being the bitter font, which would be used for anything that's in a headline. So I, you know, took the liberty of just slightly modifying the current logo to use this new bitter font. And that would be anything that's a headline. Then again, your MS Sans Serif font would be the secondary font and used for anything that, you know, wouldn't be considered a headline. So those would be your two fonts moving forward. Again, here, you know, you can see the whole amount of snow is in that MS Sans Serif, Dover Vermont is in the bitter. You know, this would be consistent as well with the Southern Vermont Deerfield Valley Chamber of Commerce. Bitter is what they use for their main title, and MS Sans Serif is the secondary, and we'd be making a similar recommendation to Wilmington, you know. Originally, when this idea came up, we had more of an idea of bringing the two towns more together, and some of the feedback we heard was we like working together, but we don't want everything to look the same across the two towns, so we felt like font would be an easy way to kinda have a thread, if you will, between the two, without it being overbearing of like, you know, we're married together and everything, cuz who knows, you know, how long this relationship will last. Don't laugh, y'all, just, just saying for purposes.
No, but I, I agree with you, and I, I would agree with you, I, I, if you don't mind me speaking, I, I'm, I would like to agree with you on principle that we work together on things. And we should, if, if that's, I believe we should have a consistent signage between the two towns of Wilmington Dover, I think it's a great idea. I hope our other town agrees with it, but I, I've been in this position long enough with trying to agree with Wilmington and Dover on things. And it's, it's not quite the way you're harmlessly saying it, right? That's all I'm saying. Not trying to throw you under the bus, Tim.
And this is Tim's, this, he, he presented this to Bytown multiple times. Tweaks were made.
Good.
It, it, and I was one of the ones who said, I really think that we need to keep some, some personal identities, you know, they've got a beautiful logo. You know, we have a completely different logo. I, I don't think that we need to do that, but consistencies in terms of this stuff is, is, I mean, you just saw that, that's ridiculous, how many different versions of Dover Vermont we have, but they just come up in different times, and you know, there's no guidelines, and, and so now, and are also our, our zoning administrator, who also has to issue a permit, can probably check on those every time a sign is presented, so, yeah.
Totally agree on that.
No, and I do have a plan that we'll get to in two more slides about how, you know, we can use this signage plan for the main town signs, but then still work together with our campaigns and kinda bring the two towns and sneak peek, that's through the pole banners, kinda like we've been currently doing. Separately, right, but again, I think the font is gonna be a subtle hint that working together, that's not really gonna be in your face and will allow the towns to keep their own identity while again, just putting that thread in there of consistency across the two. You know, color was the other piece that we were gonna make a recommendation on, just again, keep it simple, so, you know, Dover already has this, you know, logo that you guys have been using for the past, you know, ten to fifteen years or so. And it, you know, utilizes this green, so we want to lean into that, and again, get away from, is it this shade of green or that shade of green, or do we use blue and have it be defined? You know, I know the RGB is basically a code that's, you know, can be used by any designer, and that green is always gonna come out identical, no matter who's making the sign, that's the standard issue color of green. Same thing with the black and white, you know, I put it here, not all blacks are created equal, there's different shades of it, right? Dover, you know, currently is using a true black, which is zero, zero, zero. No color is involved in it at all, you know, so we just wanna make sure that, again, whoever's making the signs in the future keeps that consistent with the zeros, and same thing with the white, Dover currently is using a true white, so it's not a cream, it's not a pearl. It's true white with two fifty-five, two fifty-five, two fifty-five.
Alright, can I have one quick question?
Of course.
So where it says town offices, I'm not sure that that green is a great color for that. It, it looks, it's pale to begin with, and give it a couple of years, it's gonna be more pale. Could that be in black as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just was curious how, how.
This is really just an idea of an example, you know, I think that's something that you guys could, you know, say, hey, we like this idea, Tim, but we want the, you know, whatever that headline is, should always be in black. You know, we could add that to this plan. Or we can leave that up again to whoever's creating the individual signs, as long as they're staying within those three colors.
Whatever the background is, for example, the white changes the color with the green as you visually look at it. I could tell in that photography. And also, signs are far more readable in the upper and lowercase, like Dover Vermont, so it says town offices doesn't read as well.
Yeah.
Okay. But you're not suggesting cases?
Not necessarily, but again, if that's something that, you know, you as a board feel strongly about, that's something that we could add to a plan. Again, I want it to keep it simple, so that, you know, the more recommendations I make, the more arguments there's gonna be, right? So I tried keeping it to just the, the simple pieces that we felt, you know, would make the most impact. But we could definitely add, you know, some other things. I know Vicky at one of our meetings had mentioned, you know, sign the shape. You know, is that something that should be included in those as well?
Sign shape, what about sign size? Are we at the largest size sign that we can do via the state requirements, or are we at the sign size that we as a town decided on in some ordinance in nineteen sixty-eight? Good question.
I don't know the answer, I know, you know, going back to the different signs we have, there's a large range, right?
And we have updated it since nineteen sixty-eight. We've updated it since then.
We've done no updates since I've been on science, since I've been here now twelve years.
I think we did assign it when I first got on the board.
I think it's square footage.
Yeah, it is, it is, and, and so, yeah. So we have our own ordinance, so.
Brian, you don't have to change the sum.
So another piece that we just thought could be easily implemented, you know, to help with this, would just be, you know, town employee email signatures, just having some consistency there. Again, using the Microsoft Sans Serif font family, which is that secondary font, but it's easily found in almost all email applications. So it would just be another way of making sure that, you know, the logo's in there, hopefully using the Bytown logo as well, so that, you know, we can get some more exposure for that, but again, just creating consistency and easy places for us. And then the last piece was, you know, then how do we work together as two towns, you know, without going to a full-fledged signage plan that ties everything together, you know, and I think the pole banners isn't a great way to do that, you know, right now, we're currently using vinyl pole banners, which are about a three to five-year lifespan, so it gives us the ability every few years to change out and adapt with whatever the campaign is, you know, whatever that relationship between the two towns is. So this is what currently close to currently what we have for Dover, you know, the change being that going forward, we would go to that bitter font in the Dover, you know, Vermont, you know, we would always keep it now as Dover Vermont with the capital D, capital B, and everything else lowercase. And Wilmington would be all uppercase, but again, in the, in the bitter font, so that was just the way that we thought we could, you know, tie the two towns together, using the palette from the Deerfield, you know, Southern Vermont Deerfield Valley, but again, making subtle changes, you know, using one of the greens Dover and a little bit darker one for Wilmington, using the fall color for, you know, Dover in the fall, and another similar one that's taken from that palette for Wilmington, etc. So questions, thoughts? What do you guys think? Are we on the right track? Is this something that, you know, you, you would like to implement? Are there more pieces, less pieces that you think should be involved?
I have a lot more input. So, back to your fire station sign. In my personal opinion, I think that would be a great place. Join our community drills Wednesday, that that would be great if that was not just for you guys putting on drills and different things like that. That there was one sign within our town that was a digital lit. No, we don't ever want lit and signs, so that people can go by and know what is going on in town. And I think it'd be great, or if there's something we need to post, and it's just in one spot, I think the town of Wilmington should have the same thing. There's nothing wrong with having a lit digital sign that people can read and see things that are going on and actually see it. Okay, that's my opinion. You're more than welcome to bring that or not, let town Wilmington, with town Wilmington things. I know we're always against these internally lit signs, but they make some really nice internally lit signs that can be, you know, changed out or whatever, it can be in a place where everyone can see it that drives by it. I think it would be very useful if we're going to go the route that you keep saying that we are thinking about being a tourist town, that would be helpful for our tourists and for our people living here to have that bill, be like, oh, that's gonna go on. Cuz right now, that I can't see anything when I go by at least the fire station, so I think that, that's a good spot. And then we could also say, hey, this is, we have a sign that'll have things going on, and also the fire department to have, hey, come join, you know, so we can also help go back, that's obviously a big thing, so just throwing out there. The other thing too is I, I believe that our signs, because people can't see as good as they did, everyone's wearing glasses, and everyone now is used to looking at stuff that our eyesight is not so good, I believe we should have larger signs. So as we go forward, instead of putting up signs that we already can't see, we should, when we replace them, they should be larger. Then whoa, there it is, you know what I'm saying?
So that, that's on the town side, that's, I mean, Tim's setting out some guidelines for us to try to adhere to, so we would make the decision. And frankly, I don't want an internally lit scoreboard that's going back and forth.
Frankly, you're one person in our opinion, so let's see whatever comes.
So there's lots of opinion on it, right?
Exactly.
We have to amend the sign ordinance.
Yes.
I'm just saying.
So, Tavi.
Tavi. Yep, sorry, my thing moved around. Yeah, in agreement with Sarah, to make any changes to allow any type of a digital sign, we would need to amend the sign ordinance or create a variance for this specific sign, one or the other, if we were gonna allow that to be digitally programmed and have the letters read. Now, I, my personal preference is not for a, an internally lit, which would be a bright white sign with letters on it. I think something that would be a little bit more subtle would be a digital sign, whether or not the letters were white or red or whatever, but not a big white glaring blob. That's just a personal sign preference. Just to note, when you do come out with the final version of this design document, I just recommend CMYK color notations as well as RGB, because if you're a printer, you don't print in RGB.
Yep, great point, Tavi. I was just trying to keep it simple for, you know, terms of presentation, but I have the colors in RGB, CMYK, as well as hex for web usage as well.
Exactly.
Okay, so those are all things for us to decide further down the road. It's basically what you presented as design elements.
Correct.
That we're trying to.
Right, which would really be the font and the colors.
The word is continuity.
Yes, yep.
Makes sense.
And we've had no guidelines before, so that, that does make a lot of sense.
Beautiful.
And this isn't talking about tearing everything down and starting over, as we were planning to do it this way.
Yeah, good.
Eric, did I miss anything, or do you have anything to add?
No, just what Sarah was just asking about. This is not go and, and take every sign down and replace them all at once, it's, it's literally as we go through to replace all these signs that we would be using these standards when we, when we get new ones.
Alright. Are, are we good? And we appreciate it.
Alright.
Yeah, nice work.
Thank you.
Go get some sleep.
I'm going to work.
Okay, Eric, the second quarter update. That you sent us.
Uh, yes, I did. So the town received a payment of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents and one percent tax revenue in November twenty-ninth for the period of August second to November twenty-first. As you can see, that same payment last year was much, much lower, it was a hundred and thirty-five percent decrease, but that was a very unusually low payment for that time. And then that was followed by the second largest payment we ever received, so I don't, I'm not sure what happened in terms of filings last summer, but you know, we seemed to be back on track and up, you know, with that quarter. Everything else, you know, business development, funded Eat Sleep Shop Local, the ARPA meeting, we met with the WRC to work on the town plan. Bytown marketing, you just heard part of what we've been talking about, also helping Tim to put together that budget and plan for our marketing going into this, this year. Do it in signage program, nine of the fourteen projects submitted for payment, and we approved a new signage application for Chalet two thirty-nine. We held the special STR LTR meeting back in October, which was very well attended, and then as far as Trails and Rec goes, Hand Road Parking Lot completed in October, the Valley Bridge decking replacement was completed in November, and then Horace Hill, I believe I gave an update at the last meeting, but they are now done up on the hill. Thirteen of the disc golf pads are completed with the remaining five cleared, they just need to be installed with some gravel when it's time to do gravel work again. And I have completion dates from both organizations for the project for middle to end of May, depending on weather.
Any questions of Eric, of the, on the Q two update? Okay. Anything else, Eric, on that? You good?
Nope.
Okay, we're gonna move on to review, approve the Trails Committee charge changes. So he submitted, he provided us with the old charge and the revised potential charge. And you, I know I watched your video that the Trails Committee were told to send their concerns, questions to you and/or Jeanette, so did you have any feedback?
I received none, and I also, you know, said if you don't wanna put it in writing to come to this meeting to voice those question concerns comments, and I don't see anyone unless that's why Jim's there.
I don't think, are you here for that, for the Trails Committee?
I was joking.
There's other people though.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
The Zoomers?
Anybody else in the Zoom audience have any questions? Alright. So does somebody wanna make a motion to approve the? Oh, who's that?
Someone called me.
Michelle's.
No, everybody's on mute.
To approve.
I make a motion that we approve the revised charges for the Trails Committee.
Sorry.
Anything else? All in favor? Anything else tonight, Eric?
That'll do it, thank you guys so much.
Thank you for coming. Next, we have the consent agenda, which is to approve the minutes of January second and January fourth. Everybody was here for that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm taking, I'm taking.
Getting you out of my.
I'm trying to get, see. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, everybody was here.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January second and January fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor?
I made the motion, we approve the. I made the motion, we approve the warrants of January sixth, twenty twenty-four for one hundred forty thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars, seventy cents.
All in favor? We have NYI, we have a thank you letter from Grace Cottage, very nice, uh, for our uh thirty-five hundred dollar appropriation. We have a, here you go, Joe. We have our eagle equalized um common level appraisal. We're at seventy point eight-three percent.
Trigger, 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 we're already doing it, so.
And uh the coefficient of dispersion is twenty-four point one six. So, um, this is, this is, I read today that there are three towns in state Vermont that are over one hundred percent. And there's about fifteen that are in the ninety to a hundred, and then everybody else is way lower.
Who the heck are the towns that are over a hundred? I wanna know what those towns are. That's why I wanna move.
I, I don't know, Joe, I can't.
It'll change year to year, Joe. You're gonna keep popping around state.
Uh, so we have town meeting, Zoom trainings on the tenth, the seventeenth, and the seventh, seventh. At BLCT.org, dot events, slash events. Planning commission meets January twenty-second at six thirty PM. There's a tax sale on February first at nine thirty AM. There are only four properties on our tax sale, which is amazingly low. Um, pre-town meeting is February twenty-seventh at six PM at the Dover Town Hall. It's a Tuesday. And town meeting is March fifth, um, at Dover Town Hall. Et additions are due on the eighteen. And office, those running for offices are due on the twentieth of the ninth.
Good question.
Yeah.
On the February twenty-seventeenth, uh, pre-town, is that something that can be zoomed?
Yes.
We do it, right? Just wanna make sure some people would be involved, but they can't be there. I know we can't zoom towns either.
Yeah, cuz you can't have people voting through Zooms. Um, but yeah, we usually do Zoom pre-town. And people can watch it afterwards. All right, any liaison reports? Any executive session needed?
Uh, executive session.
Okay, so we're gonna adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-two PM.
Yes.
We already, I already signed it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, this is a piece of paper?
There, there's two of them.